Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, March 27th, 2024. It is 6:00 PM. We are at the City of Cape Canaveral City Council and Planning and Zoning Board Joint Educational Workshop Meeting here at 100 Polk Avenue in Cape Canaveral, Florida. Call this meeting to order and ask Chairman Russell, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Mayor for Tim Kellum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Now to the Planning and Zoning Board. Board Member Denny?
Here.
Board Member Juntocor?
Here.
Board Member Miller? Vice Chair Person Price?
Present.
Chairperson Russell?
Here.
Board Member Sharp?
Here.
Board Member Stroud?
Here.
Thank you and thank you all for being here, fellow council and planning and zoning board and directors. Today is an item for discussion. We'll get into that in a minute. We are live streaming, so at this point, we're going to do public participation. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward. And/or anyone listening online, please raise your hand and you'll be recognized. I do not have any cards. I do not see any hands raised. With that, we'll go ahead and close public participation. And we are item for discussion, which is green stormwater infrastructure and low-impact development codes and program incentives presented by the East Coast, excuse me, East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. See, Varion Zach has taken the stand. Floor is yours, sir.
Hey, thanks, Mayor. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
This is a pretty cool, unique event. Imagine if our council was this large, it'd be a super council. Yeah, so tonight, we're here to talk about green stormwater infrastructure and low-impact development practices. Terms you've probably heard a lot in the last few years as the city looks to expand its capabilities of reducing flooding and increasing biodiversity and helping things like the Indian River Lagoon through its own challenges with pollution. I'm just going to take you on a brief history of the project that we're going to be talking about tonight, and then I'll hand it off to our grant partners. What we're doing tonight is an important deliverable for the National Science Foundation-funded grant project that we're currently doing at Veterans Memorial Park, which is the construction of a rain garden that will help take water off of Taylor Avenue and treat it with these Florida native and Florida family plants, upwards of 1,000 of them. So in 2022, the city and Steptson University received a $50,000 grant from the National Science Foundation for a stage-one planning grant, basically to look at opportunities to engage the community and see where we could improve ourselves in things like green stormwater infrastructure and low-impact development to mitigate flooding in the city and increase our, or I should say, reduce our environmental impacts. So through the course of this stage-one planning grant, we hosted three community workshops at various city facilities and got a lot of resident feedback about what we should do, where we should do it. And I think we got to a really cool conclusion, which ended up becoming the rain garden project that you see before you on some of the banners around the room. This went on to inform the application of a stage-two grant with the National Science Foundation in 2023 that was worth upwards of $1 million. The city was successful at obtaining this grant. I'll just say that 56 communities across the nation applied, and only ultimately 19 were awarded. So, cool stuff. Thank you. So, the grant was in fact to build this site and to scientifically monitor it and see how it does. The project is supposed to be transferable and adaptable to not only other areas of the city, but other municipalities in Florida and across the country. Another deliverable of it was to look at a city's policies related to stormwater and how we want to do that. You know, we can only do so much on the infrastructure side, so there are other things that has to be done too with policy that can improve our well-being across the city to reduce flooding and reduce our environmental impacts. The construction of the rain garden started in January, and we are tracking to have it completed by the summer months for the rainy season. This is the largest grant endeavor we've done in terms of the number of project partners that we have. I will just list them off. We have 15, including the city. We have Steptson University's Institute for Water and Environmental Resilience, the National Science Foundation, of course, Kimley Horn and Associates, the Marine Resources Council, the Brevard Zoo, the St. John's River Water Management District, Ferguson Water Works, Riverside Conservancy, Florida Sea Grant, UFIFIS, the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program, Embry-Riddle University, and my university, the Florida Institute of Technology. So with that, I will hand it over to Brenda. Brenda used to work for the City of Cape Canaveral. I'm sure you all recognize her. She was our old senior planner. She now works for the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, helping us do a lot of policy work and also helping us get a lot more grants. So, thank you, Brenda.
Good evening, everyone. So, Zach, hi. So, as Zach said, my name is Brenda Defoe-Supernot. I am the Director of Planning for the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, formerly the Senior Planner for the City of Cape Canaveral. So, I think I recognize most of you in the room, but that's who I am if you don't know me. So, I just want to kind of provide some context for you guys in terms of resilience and then lead into the policy discussion, which I will be followed by Jerry Murphy. But I also want to say that this isn't necessarily something that is sponsored by NSF in the sense that we have to have this policy discussion, but it is within the scope, as Zach mentioned, of our project. That was one thing we recognized, that while we can do these really cool projects that the policy has to follow, so that's what we're here to discuss tonight. Zach mentioned a lot of our project partners, so I'm going to skip over that. But generally speaking, I want to get into the timeline, as we said. And one of the big things that kind of kicked us off was the vulnerability assessment. That was one of the projects I started here with. And what it did was it led to a lot of these other projects that you see here today. And so I wanted to kind of focus on some of the vulnerabilities at first, and then we'll get into, like I said, the policy discussion. So, one thing we know is that the city is covered by a lot of impervious surface. The city was built during the space race, so a lot of the building practices, a lot of the site development are from past times. They don't necessarily take into account future conditions. And so when we think about that with extreme weather, some of the conditions we're facing, when I was here, I know we had several rain events. These were just, you know, run-of-the-mill summer storm events that kind of overwhelmed the stormwater system. Those are the things that are probably going to become more frequent in addition to the storms and the, just the extremes. And being able to predict those are going to be less and less frequent is what we're seeing from a lot of our data. And so with all of that in mind, I just want to kind of set the context, like I said. So, when we look at sea level rise and high tide days, our expectation for right now is that, it might be hard to see on some of the maps, but we're trending somewhere between five and six feet of sea level rise by 2,100. And for barrier island communities, that's very important. You're surrounded on water essentially on all sides. And this is not a unique to just the city of Cape Canaveral, but as I said, to a lot of the barrier island in Brevard, Volusia, along the state coastline. So, the expectation based on our projections is that we might see upwards, depending on where you are, maybe 10 to 19 days of sea level rise, meaning that water is coming up onto land. With that, some of the depths that we might see are between, I would say, half a foot to two feet, depending on where you are, again. One of the interesting things about this city is that because of some of the hydrology, some of the expectations, again, I think people expect that maybe we'll see some rise or some impacts from the Atlantic Ocean side. But what our information is telling us is that it's really going to come from the lagoon side. And so, when we talk about sea level rise mixed with storm surge, our current day scenario is not great. This is not intended to be, you know, scary, if you will, but I wanted, again, to set expectations. So, in a cat warm storm surge, that is the red area. This is what our projections say for today. So, that was 2022, or now, if you will. So, when we look to the future, it gets a little bit worse, if you will. So, again, when we're looking at our high tide days, and again, I'm using the intermediate high, I will note that the reason that I'm showing this projection specifically is that the state itself passed a number of measures recently through Resilient Florida Grant legislation that said that coastal communities and inland communities had to look at certain factors when considering infrastructure, and this is statewide, and there's money attached to that. And you guys actually are the recipients of one of those. So, we did, I mentioned the previous vulnerability assessment. The City of Cape Canaveral will be getting an updated one with these new criteria. And some of the criteria are some of the maps I'm showing you here. But you will get a more formal document and more formal process as we go through that process. And so for 2070, which is kind of what we're using as our kind of threshold tipping point, if you will, this is some of the expectations we're seeing in our projections. I'll also note that the gauge, the tide gauge that we're using is actually just north of us, Trident Pier in Port Canaveral. And this is a NOAA gauge, and there are several all across the United States. So, these gauges have been in effect for decades in many cases, and they have a lot of historical data that come with them. And so that's how we're able to kind of project these scenarios out. And so these are some of the high tide depths associated with 2070. And then this is sea level rise and storm surge for 2070. And so when we talk about some of the infrastructure issues that you guys might see, infrastructure alone is not going to fix this. It really does have to come down to a collective policy discussion. We're not necessarily here to talk about any specific site or any upcoming project, if you will, but we do want you guys to kind of have the context and then some of the consideration for moving forward so that you do make informed decisions with these future conditions in mind. And so when we think about, again, this is just another representation, but a cross-section of sea level rise in high tide conditions. And then when we think about sea level rise in storm surge conditions. And of course, we do tie this back to our really cool Veterans Memorial Park project. Again, very cool initiative. This will help with some of the quality and quantity issues, but this alone is not going to solve the problem. So, part of the discussion we'll have tonight is what are some of the development practices you guys might look to in the future that might help alleviate some of these issues? So, I will just leave it there and turn it over to Jerry, and I'm going to switch very quickly to his presentation. I'm sorry. There we are.
Good evening, city commissioners and planning board. I might call you the LPA, because that's your official title under the state, but I recognize that you have a different distinction here. For the record, I'm Jerry Murphy with the University of Florida, and I'm going to try and provide you with some overview of how we got here today. I guess I'm supposed to speak really closely to this. How we got here today and where things are going in other parts of the state and some things that you might consider in terms of looking forward. So, to make good land development, human occupancy redevelopment policy decision, it's good to put our historical approach into the same perspective. In the later half of the 20th century, Marjorie Stoneman Douglas, whose name may be more recently associated with school shootings, published her epic socio-environmental book, The Everglades River Grass. And it starts with this epic statement. "There are no other Everglades in the world. They are, they have always been, one of the unique regions of the earth, remote, never wholly known, and nothing like them exists." And then from the late 60s until this decade, Floridians rejected the previous definitions that our state was a commodity of no intrinsic value. Instead, they recognized Florida as a unique treasure which each generation has an obligation to protect for themselves in the future. The environmental movement, which fundamentally changed Floridians' perception of themselves and the places where they live, was based on sound science supporting wise policy. And symbolizing this was a series of environmental and land management studies. And these were started out in 1971, following those terrific fires in the Everglades, where we got wise to the fact that we weren't always going to be full of water. And if we continued to drain our water, there would be times when the Everglades would dry up and would catch on fire. That was pretty stunning. And so a series of events in the 20th century, early 20th century, I'm sorry, late 20th century, led to these political actions and resulting in legislation, much of which is still codified in Florida statutes. And these efforts continue to evolve into the 80s, culminating with the 1985 Growth Management Act. And that resulted in, among other things, the establishment of the State Land Planning Agency, which, depending on how long you've lived in Florida, has been the Department of Community Affairs and then the Department of Economic, I'm sorry, the Department of Economic Opportunity, and then, most recently, Florida Commerce. And so, the spaghetti strands don't really do justice to the actual impact of the systems that befell the state in these two years, 2004 and 2005. I particularly am familiar with Charlie. I was the Community Development Director at Fort Myers Beach, where it didn't quite make a direct hit, but it was very close. We had three feet of sand on our main barrier island road, Estero Boulevard, Manatee. And we were very fortunate that we had a heavy equipment operator who lived on the island and had brought his equipment onto the island for safe storage during the hurricane. And he was able to get our roads cleared. But Charlie came across the state and gave you guys some weather, too. So, no one is immune. The bar graph, though, I think helps to document the hundreds of millions of dollars of economic impact witnessed by that same tropical storm season. And again, this is almost 20 years ago. We've had worse things happen since. So, come now the 21st century, and we get the hurricane impacts and then the reaction to that, and legislation generally takes a couple of years to react to things that happen. And it generally is reactive as opposed to proactive. So, we had the Post Disaster Redevelopment Planning Initiative, and that started out and was going to be a mandatory requirement at the time. But the 2011 Community Planning Act came along, and basically, some folks would say, Bob Graham for one, that it gutted Florida planning regulations. But some of us saw silver lining to it, because it really relaxed a lot of the one-size-fits-all, state-mandated things, and provided some opportunity for local governments to be a little more vision-based, a little less data-based, and to look into what they wanted the future to look like. Then came the Peril of Flood legislation. That followed from federal legislation called Bigger Waters. It was going to basically increase flood insurance about tenfold. When people realized that, the reaction politically was very huge, and that was eventually rolled back somewhat. But locally, in the state of Florida anyway, we had the Peril of Flood Act, which required local governments to go into their comprehensive plans and make certain provisions addressing sea level rise, which until that time was not in Florida statutes and wasn't even allowed by many state offices to be discussed. And then presently, as Brenda mentioned, from 2021 until now, the legislation keeps evolving, the Resilient Florida Grant Program, which has brought in some requirements for vulnerability assessment. And the components of those are our critical assets inventory. You have to identify what infrastructure assets, cultural assets, there's a broad range, are important to the community and also of regional value. And after you've done that, then you look at the sea level rise components, other storm effects, climate change, weather events, and do an exposure and sensitivity analysis to show you basically the graphics that Brenda was showing, where your vulnerabilities are going to be in the future. Then there's community outreach, which you've engaged in, reports, maps, and tables, which you've seen. And finally, you have to have peril of flood compliance. If you haven't already had it, your community is in compliance with peril of flood. So, following up on Brenda's review, the Program for Resource-Efficient Communities, that's who I work for at the University of Florida, is working to develop new land development projects, and we promote. And if we can successfully implement those efforts with private developers, and that's what we've been doing in central Florida, we think that it's very possible that we can translate those successful efforts into local government, community policy, and proactive regulations. So, I want to go back. Now, we talked about policy, a little bit of the states evolving policy. And now I want to mention about actual conventional development practices. And Florida's been developing rapidly since 1947. As our state's population has grown steadily, despite economic fits and starts, there's a cycle, about a seven-year cycle that we seem to go through that repeats itself, and we're just shocked every time it does. But since the mid-20th century, and Florida has led the nation in new home construction. And we've covered development policy, so now let's look at some practice. So, conventionally, once a development project is approved, the physical construction process follows the same primary pattern, regardless of how unique a conceptual design or plan might be. Land is cleared, except for the wetlands, and it's reshaped to create high ground that drains to wet or dry detention retention areas. And roads and infrastructure are constructed to service furnished lots. And drainage infrastructure connects the high to the low areas. Then with the horizontal infrastructure in place, groups of lots are sold to home builders who build an additional, who bring in additional fill to ensure that the lots are above lake-based flood elevation and/or drain to the roads. And as the homes are finished, in-ground irrigation and turf landscaping are installed to be very quickly, to make these homes presentable for sale to the market perceptions of Florida living. So, here's a contemporaneous example from East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. On completion, this Dell Webb community is proposed to have 1,350 homes. They'll be conventionally landscaped, and these homes have conventional St. Augustine turf landscapes and are built on five or more feet of fill above the surrounding natural area with stormwater basins or lakes excavated in the middle of the homes. And here's an example from a pattern book, and pattern books can go a long way into considerable detail and can include exact landscaping specifications. So, these are basically the developers provisioned to the builders, and then the builders will incorporate this along with the developers into the homeowners association documents for perpetual maintenance. But there are other ways to do it, and we're exploring that more and more, particularly as water and the ability to get water becomes a bigger issue. And the limitations on the availability of portable water have led to the formation of a Sustainable Landscape Design Group to make specific recommendations for a development called Sunbridge. And we'll look at a particular aspect of Sunbridge, which is going to be a huge development. I think it has a 30-year horizon. We'll look at Westland Park, which is one of the first parts that are being developed with the idea of low-impact design and management principles that the group adopted. That was guided from the proposed landscapes for the model homes at Westland Park. And so, here's the example of what we've been working with. By June, they had developed plantless and basic design principles, and those were integrated into the Sunbridge Community Landscaping Standards. This would be similar to your Land Development Code, Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, code ordinances. And in Westland Park's 10 model homes, we have moved away from turf-dominated landscapes to drought-tolerant shrubs, trees, and alternative ground covers. And we also encourage the use of compost as a soil amendment to improve soil-water holding capacity. And in the areas between the curb and the sidewalk, the Toho Water District partnered with PREC and the developer to swap out the St. Augustine and Try Sunshine Mimosa, perennial peanut, and other low-impact ground covers. Are everybody familiar with perennial peanut? Have you seen that? So, that's a ground cover. It looks like grass from the distance, but it has little yellow flowers that pop up all over it. So, that's very self-sustainable. Because it's a peanut, it's a Fabieaceae. It creates its own nitrogen. It doesn't require inputs. It grows pretty well, and it doesn't grow fast, so it doesn't need to be mowed as often. And the perennial peanut, which you can see on the bottom right, is doing particularly well in this landscape. And finally, we use citizen science collected data to directly calculate irrigation water use over a 130-day period from the first reading in July through the most recent in November of last year. And the rolling averages for the Cherry Lake managed landscapes, these are the low-impact landscapes, is 15.5 inches per year compared to 67.7 inches per year for the two projects that were started in the Sunbridge prior to getting involved with the University of Florida and with Cherry Lake. So, minimizing landscape impacts. In the Florida, biosolids management is another major developing problem. As ag lands shrink, the opportunity to disperse biosolids without exceeding damaging concentrations of phosphorus is disappearing. And to the degree that compost can bind up nitrogen and potassium and phosphorus in slow-release forms and can widen the area of distribution and offset the use of mineralized fertilizer, it could be a big part of solving this problem. And earlier today, I was in Mamama at the University of Florida's Gulf Coast Research and Education Center for the first annual compost consortium. And so the use of biosolids and the conversion of that to something that isn't chemical fertilizer and that doesn't go into a landfill is becoming an increasingly important opportunity for the state. Currently, much of the landscaping that's being done here starts out in nurseries, and those nurseries are importing peat from Canada to make their potting mix. So, there's a lot of work being done trying to utilize compost instead of bringing all that peat from our neighbors to the north. So, that's a very exciting kickoff today. Much more exciting than my trip across Act Four to get here tonight. And so we think it starts with rehabilitating the soil. And we are told that good compost can reinvigorate soil biology and increase water holding capacity and facilitate keton exchange, all of which increases the likelihood of successfully establishing a sustainable landscape without resorting to high-impact practices. And as I stated before, I think if we can successfully implement these efforts with private developers whose history is not replete with concerns for minimizing environmental degradation, we can translate these successful efforts into local government, community policy, and regulations. And we wanted to start at a very high level. I'm going to quit there and leave it open for questions from the boards and then from the audience.
I just wanted to add a couple more things. Like I said, I know we went through this kind of quickly, but again, it was to set the context of, you know, where the city is currently, some of the past practices. And with some of these extreme weather events, climate change coming, where does the city think it wants to go in the future? As I said, the city has been very proactive in doing a lot of these public projects, but it can't alone happen on the public side. The private side does need to follow. And then the way we do that is through policy. So, I just wanted you guys to keep that in mind. And as Jerry mentioned, he's exploring through his program, and we are as a council, what are those new practices looking like? And how do we connect, again, you know, the land use to the water issue, both from a quality and quantity standpoint? Because you've got the Banana River Lagoon to your west, and then you've got the ocean to your east. So, again, it's the balance that we're trying to strike as we move into the future, and what does that look like?
Thank you. And thank you as well for presenting, council, board, anyone have any questions? Please, Councilmember Willis, I see you.
Primarily for the City of Cape Canaveral, it's going to be questions of redevelopment versus virgin land development. So, how can we incorporate a lot of these things in a redevelopment state?
Well, I would suggest that you look at what's being done on green field development, we call it. And that can be utilized on a lot-by-lot basis as requirements for redevelopment. You may consider elevating structures and not allowing enclosure below so that water can flow through. Fill is probably the worst thing you can do on a barrier island that's looking at a potential of five to six feet of sea level rise, because of five to six feet of sea-level rise, because it just takes the impacts of the lot and spreads them to other lots. It doesn't always go to the road, and when it does go to the road, sometimes it backs up, so I strongly think that you should discourage fill or prohibit it. And that's certainly something that you can do within the National Flood Insurance Program, and it's defensible. Then, of course, commercial development, you have to look at trying to reduce impervious surface. The more impervious surface you have, there was a great diagram of how you have plenty. You know, that needs to be something to consider reducing as you move forward. You can do that by reducing parking requirements, if that's feasible, using, you know, co-adjacent parking, you know, where you've got a business that's open from nine to five next to a restaurant, that's probably a pretty good opportunity for some symbiosis. And then looking at pervious pavement, pavements that allow the water to percolate through. And I think then also you want to encourage, particularly in commercial development, similar projects to what you've done yourself. And so you've now got a great demonstration project, that there's going to be interpretation, kiosk, and so forth, and make that an educational opportunity and get the kids involved. You know, bring the K through 12 folks in, the universities, and allow the young folks who say, "What are you doing to our planet?", you know, to get involved and promote for that. You know, those are some of the things that you can do, and I think the biggest thing you have to look at is continuing education of your community, letting them understand what's coming down in the future, how we may or may not be here, but we will be leaving behind people and property that will be here, and we need to address that if it's going to maintain any value going forward.
Thank you. Mayor Perdham, any questions at this time?
Yeah, just a question. Where our city is 98% built out, and there's several hotels that are being built as we speak. My question is, as policymakers, where do we start? What do we start with? You know, how, what's our first step to make them use pervious building materials? It seems like we have to do it quickly because we're running out of space, and we need to educate the, you know, residents and everything, but what would be the first step to get this going, in your opinion?
I think it starts with making sure that your comprehensive plan has the goals, objectives, and particularly policies that support this type of effort, and you've got the legal foundation to go forward with regulations. I think if you look at redevelopment as the threshold, that's a new request, you know, that's a new permit. And if you have new criteria that address changing circumstances, like the future of sea-level rise and extreme weather that we're looking at, you know, then it's looking at how do we make the new development more amenable to keeping everybody from fewer impacts? And I don't think that there's any problem in doing that, but you need to make sure that there's good consensus around it so that, you know, two years from now, a big developer doesn't come in with, you know, whatever guns they can bring to bear and say, "This is terrible", and you end up repealing it. Some of the extreme things that you might consider, and I don't encourage you to do this, but factually they are available to you, you can have moratorium on permits while you consider what you're going to do going forward, and that sort of slows the process down. Those are not popular. They're about as popular as eminent domain. But there are tools in your tool basket, and you have to look to see, you know, what are the pressures? Do you have a lot of pressures of commercial development or redevelopment that's coming in in your 90% built-out community that is abiding by old rules that just don't work anymore? So the time is, you know, nigh, it's not going to be here right away, but it is going to come, 2040 is probably going to be your first threshold. And the other thing is, you know, take advantage, the silver lining behind every disaster. It just shows you what the future's going to be like permanently when the water rises. When you get inundated from a hurricane, tropical storm, whatever, a nor'easter, you know, that's what things are going to look like in the future all the time. Well, how do we plan for that, you know? And one of the biggest things is by elevating. New construction should definitely be elevated. The National Flood Insurance Program allows commercial development to do dry flood prevention. That's not always a great idea, because again, the water's not able to pass through, and you're a pass-through situation. It goes across, or sometimes it goes this way, you're a pass-through situation. So if they allow that water to pass through, it's not being diverted to other places, it's not eroding like it does when it gets channelized by two buildings that are solid to each other. So that elevation thing, I think, is extremely important. And then allowing the water to percolate, having places where there are not pervious, impervious surfaces, but that the water can be held, like the project that you're doing at the Veterans Park.
I could add to that, too, Councilmember Cal. Later this year, you're going to see comprehensive plan updates that we've been working on for quite a while so that we can meet the state mandated Peril of Flood Act that requires us to start doing some of this stuff within the comprehensive plan. I guess actually first the planning and zoning board will see it. But within that, there will be new tools that we will try and implement with your guidance that will allow us to hopefully develop in a more sustainable manner that prevents flooding and puts a little bit more the responsibility on developers. And one of those is, for example, starting something called an adaptation action area or AAA. That's what the state calls it. We want to start calling it the enhanced resilience area. This would be a specific area of the city that has been identified to be exceptionally vulnerable to storm surge, and it would be an area that would require developers to be more conscientious of how they build so that we don't impact the lives of people around them and can improve the city's own infrastructure at the same time. So that is something you will be seeing later this year that we're excited to bring to you.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Davis, yes?
I'm going to go for Zach for talk. We're looking at developing the hub. You know, we're looking to do things underground, so there's a tank, that's why. I think that we're doing a mess in Park, why don't we incorporate it into the hub? Would that be possible?
So yes, structurally speaking, that is something we would look at for sure, adding, incorporating stormwater chambers underneath the ground, as well as probably some permeable surfaces. But we need to understand how much that can carry and see about replicating that in others areas of the city. I would always encourage for any project, if it's possible engineering-wise and fiscally responsible, that we try and find more storage capacity to take capacity off of the existing stormwater system. That's basically the name of the game, is finding more buckets to put the water in. And instead of just putting it directly into the lagoon, which cumulatively, you have to imagine, I don't even know how many stormwater outfalls up and down the length of the lagoon across all of our county. You know, after Hurricane Ian, the water rose tremendously and stayed elevated for a while. So if we could put it back in storage sites on the ground and give it a chance to put back into the soil directly, that could give us a chance to alleviate some of the pressures on the system.
Councilmember Jackson?
Well, this will be a fun question. You know how I am. Okay, there was a famous case of elevating a lot that resulted in a very negative impact, and that is Surfside. In the final verdict for the Surfside collapse, the developer across the street had built an elevated lot that caused runoff up under the Surfside. And the verdict literally said that's when the Surfside became unstable. So as we look at this, and with you guys being so heavily involved in this, how do we work around? Or do you know anyone looking into these things when we're looking at elevating lots and making sure that our permitting is correct so that we're not causing damage to any existing structures that are older out there?
So I don't know if I'm going to comment specifically on Surfside, but I think the general consensus, though, that that was a totality of circumstances situation, I would say. I don't know if I would say it was due to one thing, but I think the thesis of what came out of that is that some of the conventional development practices are not considering some of these future conditions, and so that's kind of what we're here to talk about today. And so I think to answer the question, when you think about the future, I don't know if I can, or anyone can guarantee that something like that, or there's not going to be impacts, but as you develop site by site, you have to kind of look at the totality of your situation and figure out how best to move forward in light of all these kind of different conditions, if you will.
Now, are there any of you all that are scientists looking at that, though? Because literally, that was in the verdict.
So not, I'm...
Is that the lot was overbuilt and it was elevated. So as we look at those things for a city, we have a lot of older infrastructure. We want to be sure that what we're doing is putting in sound policy, in my opinion, so that we're doing the right thing for the environment, because we have lost Ski Island out there. You know, I used to go out there when I was boating, and it's underwater, as well as a picnic table. So absolutely, we need to look at what we need to do, but having safe building code is going to make a huge difference because our structures, we have a lot of older structures.
Right, and a lot of that is regulated through the state, through the Florida Building Code, so, but that is where things like the adaptation action area, peril of flood considerations come in, because in the resilient Florida statute, some of these things got rolled into that, to that new law. But it essentially says that, yes, you guys should be considering building techniques that are more stringent or exceed some of the, what we know is typical for Florida. And that not only helps with insurance, but it helps with flooding, and it helps with kind of private property protection, loss of life, those kinds of things. But the intent is already there, it's just getting people to see that there is a different way. And in a way to do that is in the policy. And as Jerry mentioned, you've done a lot of demonstration projects, but we need to translate that from, you know, city properties onto the private side.
Right, I was just curious if there were any kind of studies for any type of sewage or storm runoff when these lots are elevated? Because I would think getting the water away in a, you know, in an organized manner versus letting run off a car would be a huge thing with that.
I don't know if there's a specific study I can name, but I know that through permitting processes, whether it's through the city or through the water management district, there's a lot of organizations that kind of help buildings get built, and they all have regulatory authority or not to do certain things. So I think collectively, people are considering these things, but specific to that side, I can't really say what exactly happened.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Russell, any questions, just going down the line at this time? Please, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy made a couple of points in his talk that resonated with me. So one of the points was to escape flooding, elevate. Well, if we elevate lots by fill, that prohibits percolation. It's working against itself. How do we elevate without filling?
You elevate the structure. The base floor of the structure comes up off the ground.
So we do that with pile driving and concrete piles?
Depending on the type of structure, you know.
Yeah.
If you're dealing with a single-family residence, although they seem to get bigger, you're not looking at such a dramatic injection to the ground as you would with a commercial structure, and depending on its location to the water.
And you are allowed to, that are doing that right now.
Doing what? Installing piles, elevating buildings?
So yeah, that's one of the, in New Smyrna Beach, for example, which is in Volusia County in our region, there are a lot of homes that are being elevated right now, and that's one approach that they're taking. But then coincidentally, one of the benefits of doing that is that it provides an opportunity to store stormwater on a site versus the traditional practice, like we talked about, where you just try to move it off the land quickly. And so again, as you think of future conditions, that's not, that status quo is not going to be enough to manage stormwater, both from a quality and quantity perspective.
Well, throughout the city, we have put in regulations that say you have to retain a certain amount of the first waterfall, and I forgot the number of inches that is. And so you drive around town, and on lots and lots and lots of properties, you see all these swales, swimming pools, they got the whole water. So we've been working hard at that, holding the water on the property, or at least the first X number of inches of rainfall. So we've done that, and we're still doing it. The other thing we've looked at is pervious surfaces. Pervious surfaces are more expensive, but do we look at making that a regulation? Anytime you pour concrete, it's got to be pervious? I mean, help me with that.
Well, you could go so far as to say anytime or everything, but I think you look at percentages is a better way to do it. Certain ADA requirements and things like that, you know, aren't necessarily amenable to pervious surfaces or to paper blocks and grass, but a lot of it can be. Your history shows that you've used a lot of concrete and a lot of asphalt. It doesn't drain well.
No.
Well, it drains to a hole somewhere, it goes down into the water, and the water table goes up, and it doesn't drain well. And it has no opportunity to percolate over the vast surface area. So definitely, impervious surfaces are important, reduce pervious surfaces, and particularly in two ways for the existing context, since you're mostly built out. You can require it with redevelopment. There may be need on certain lots for waivers because they're just so small and grandfathered in, you know, that has to be addressed probably administratively, but you look at a basic regulation that applies across the municipality. And then the other thing is for existing properties that aren't in redevelopment mode, incentives. Incentives for folks to do things, whether they be financial or assistance from community groups, from the local government, just ways to get people to come in and revise. You'll see a program on, I think PBS, called Flip My Florida Yard, and that's a program that IFAS has demonstrated for taking an existing landscape and trying to make it a little more Florida-friendly, and that includes addressing stormwater.
Are there any success stories around the state where there's been a requirement to no longer use impervious pavement or concrete, in other words?
It's being used in a lot of coastal communities on the West and the East Coast. We could provide you with some examples, I don't have a list off the top of my head. But there's also communities that don't allow fill, particularly in the coastal zone. You know, you're a coastal floodplain, the entire barrier island is a coastal floodplain. That means it's going to flood from time to time, particularly after a storm event, and particularly a major one. So eliminating fill helps a lot in terms of the impacts on the neighbors and on the broader community. If it's not going on your land, it's running off to somebody else's land or to the public facilities.
Therefore, you full want to raise your...
You raise your base floor.
Raise your floor, you've got to put piles under it because you can't fill. Or at least, fill is fights against that, so you got to put in piles.
Yeah, the idea is to put in pipelines so that the water can flow through when it does flood.
I don't see that happening with private residences. Do you, is it?
There are requirements on barrier island communities, I'm familiar with some on the West Coast where fill is prohibited.
Okay.
And they're mostly built out, so when a property comes in, and there are properties that are either at grade, and they want to fill to base flood elevation, which can be as much as five, six feet, the water runs off to the road, but it also runs off to the neighbors, and then they flood. And, you know, in common law, that's a nuisance or negligence or trespass claim against that property. Under the National Flood Insurance Program, which you participate in, the minimum National Flood Insurance Program requirements don't address that at all. They allow for fill. You don't have to do that, though, you can have higher standards. And in having higher standards, there's a program called No Adverse Impacts, and that basically says, whatever you do developing your land, it can't have any adverse impacts, particularly from floodwater, on the neighboring properties or on the public in general. And by utilizing those types of development regulations, you are eligible for higher community rating service evaluations, which provide a discount depending on the number that you get. that you get from your score of five percent for National Flood Insurance, which is only going up.
So here we sit, we'd like to be higher, we wish to be higher, floodwater or, or, uh, storm surge comes in, we can't fight against it, it's coming, or it will come on its own. So the only protection you have against that is have your house sitting above it.
That's the best protection.
That's the best protection.
My protection could be to elevate my house on fill.
Yeah.
And, and you know, the rest of y'all.
But everybody else gets it.
Do, do your own thing, you know?
Well, insurance policies.
From a community perspective, you know, you're looking as sitting boards at the larger community perspective and you have the power and the opportunity to regulate against that type of effect.
Uh, here's a tip for everybody in the room. I read an insurance policy, flood insurance policy. You're, uh, you're insuring yourself against flood. The policy reads, you're not going to be covered for flood unless the properties adjacent to you flood. So.
There's one adjacent, one, one adjacent property has to flood.
Right. So just something to know, go read and, go read your policy. There's little hidden things in there like that. We, we all have to be aware of what's in the policy and then we have to be aware of how to raise the property and how to put water into the soil. But to percolate, it's only going to percolate so much and it goes into the lagoon and out in the ocean. The magic solution is to raise everything.
I'd, I'd like to, Lamar and the rest of the folks here this evening, this is a perfect example, if you want to drive out there this evening on your way home or tomorrow, go to two forty-three Coral on Harbor, Harbor House.
I would agree with that.
And some of you live there and some of you see it and you have, you've heard about this from some of the neighbors. They're, this is a new, new project going in, a new single-family home, having to meet the latest, uh, flood requirements. So if you drive by there, you'll see that the finished floor elevation on this home is, let's just say a foot above the surrounding properties. And it's got a lot of the neighbors very concerned, rightfully so. As you drive by, you'll see. And so this is what we're talking about this evening here, is there are other ways to address this?
What are those other ways? We keep beating around it and dancing around it, give us some solutions.
That's what we're going to be doing in the next few months, is we're going to be providing the council and the P and Z board with specific policies in our comprehensive plan and our land development regulations. So I don't have them here in front of me this evening. But you'll be seeing them very shortly.
Fair enough, okay.
And I think that one of the purposes of this meeting is tonight is to get you all thinking about these ideas and then get in your direction. Because whatever staff and consultants propose doesn't go anywhere until it's adopted.
Vice Chair Price? Oh, please, go ahead, Zach, do you need a point?
I just, I just have a question for my own knowledge, what are you seeing with best management practices regarding like cities elevating their own public right of place? Like what about, is that the knock-on effects, like what does that entail?
I, I, I'm not a fan of it because it's, you know, the way historically Florida cities have developed, the road is part of the initial drainage system. And then you get into pipes, hopefully that are above water. Um, and so elevating roads causes a reverse effect. And we've seen that in Miami, I was down there for an APA thing, I think a couple years ago, and they said they had it fixed, but their fix is pumps and pumps require energy. And if the energy, you know, I mean, it's not, I would call it a sustainable solution. What I'm seeing being effective is let the roads flood, they'll go away. Um, as the roads get closer and closer to the surface waters, at some point, there has to be a plan to abandon the public interest in those roads, let the private sector support maintaining their private access. Public interest is just money right going down the drain. You know, it's worse than a boat, which is a hole in the water into which you throw money, you know, it, it's just a loss. So you have to plan for vacation of the public interest, where the roads are most vulnerable and your vulnerability assessments are showing you that. And then I think you have to look at elevating structures, not the ground beneath them, utilize the ground beneath them for cisterns if you've got the capacity, or at least for percolated drainage, parking, storage access, the stuff that the National Flood Insurance Program allows. Discourage or prohibit enclosure. Uh, they have breakaway walls and they have flood vents and those things work sometimes, but in major storms like Ian, they tend to fail. And so the idea is to let the water flow through. And then what I think more of the progressive communities that I've worked with on the East Coast and on the West Coast are doing is requiring additional freeboard above the state's now one foot of freeboard in the building code, as much as four feet of freeboard I've seen, uh, in coastal areas and, and non-coastal areas actually. And, and that's, I think, looking forward. But the, the idea of fill and barrier islands, you know, that, that's like seawalling your way away from sea wall of a rise, you can't fill yourself away from disaster flooding impacts or from sea level rise.
Vice Chair Price?
Well, you know, what a great presentation, thank you so much. A lot to think about, a lot to, uh, absorb here, if you'll excuse the pun. Looking forward to working on this and, uh, really don't have any questions tonight, just a lot to think about, thank you.
Board Member Denny?
I think it is a great presentation and I think it is something we need to address right away. I live across the street from the one that has been risen and the neighbors next door, they already see drainage going into their, their place. So we have old buildings, you know, nineteen sixties, fifties, that a lot of people now are coming in and tearing them down. And we do want everybody to be safe, but if there's incentives or ideas for runoff that, when they do do that, you need to have so much, uh, drainage and so forth going forward. So I'm, I'm glad we're addressing it and looking forward to working it all out. Thank you for your presentations.
Yeah, the typical situation in platted lands are very small lots. And so it's almost impossible, if you're going to fill, to hold all of your water. And I think the, the component that you talk about, this first several inches of water have to be held, I don't know that that applies to individual lot residential areas, it's usually larger commercial projects that have to do that. So you need to be looking at what, what can residents do? And I think in a redevelopment scenario, and you're going to see redevelopment, there's a thousand people a day moving into Florida, they're going to go somewhere, some of them are going to come to Barad County and some of them are going to locate on the barrier island. You know, make them do the right thing as the town redevelops and do the right thing yourself, what you're doing. I mean, you're doing excellent demonstration, the idea of doing this for all of your public projects, very good ideas, but there's only so much you can do on public property, there's only so much public property that you have. The idea that has to be, I think, moving forward to start looking at what the private sector can do in a redevelopment component and maybe with incentives to existing properties to move forward and, and start. I mean, once people start seeing it and they see the effects of it and, you know, the, the presidential streets don't flood as often, now that you've got the park absorbing some of water, you know, those things I think are demonstrable. And again, I can't emphasize how much you need to involve younger people in it because they have big influence on their parents.
Do you have any examples of incentives that other communities are using to, for the private sector?
Not, not in my back pocket, but we can bring some of those forward as we move through the process.
Great, thanks.
And, um, I will add that, two things. So also when we think about redevelopment again, where because of a lot of the, um, climatic changes we're experiencing in Florida, we're also moving toward more of an adaptation development, if you will. So again, as you, you move forward, think about it in terms of that, it's not simply just redevelopment for the sake of redevelopment, but it's adapting to future conditions, um, all of which we can't predict, but at the very least, as you guys sit here today, you can start, um, implementing some of those policies and like Zach said, some of that stuff will be coming. Um, the second part of that is that the Regional Planning Council and actually UF, we did do an LID project, Low Impact Development, um, Green Stormwater Project with Volusia County. And we do have some, uh, resource materials that we could provide, um, I can send this to Zach. But that also has some, um, examples and some incentives, though I think one of the things we found is that incentives don't necessarily work and it works best when it is required in a comp plan or a land development code.
We have a few incentives, we've already started to roll out, very small-scale projects. I don't think, you know, a few people doing them will make that much of a difference, but I think over the long term it could. And I think it is definitely enough to do, uh, to inspire others. So the city has three programs that we call our Adopta, insert word, Adopta Mangrove, Adopta Tree, Adopta Rain Barrel, all of which those pamphlets are right on that table if anybody wants to look. Residents could take advantage of these programs, we will give them a free fifty-five gallon rain barrel. Um, we have a program that will give coordinated trees upon request to properties that meet certain requirements. And then we have a mangrove program that we can give to lagoon-front property owners to deal with erosion control and improve local water quality. So we do have some of those. We got into this situation with kind of like death by a thousand cuts, death by a thousand properties. We can get our way out by, uh, a thousand Band-Aids or permanent fixes, as I like to say. Uh, so if anybody wants to look into those, we have that. And we also have a Low Impact Development Guide also on that table for residents that they can get some inspiration for projects that they can do on their own properties at this time.
Thank you. Board Member Gentlecore?
Yes, I, I really don't have any comments.
Other than to thank you, this is a great presentation. Um, your enthusiasm is wonderful too. Um, I, I can't think of anything to add to it, I'm looking forward to seeing what we get. Thank you.
You. Board Member Strout?
Uh, September the thirteenth, two thousand and eight, Hurricane Ike raked across the Baltimore Peninsula. This is on the Texas coast. If you've not seen the images of that peninsula after that category-two storm raked across that area, it's shocking to see what was leveled. It literally decimated all of those communities. There were a few structures that remained standing. Guess what? They were built up on stilts. They were above the storm surge and the storm surge was not able to knock those structures down. Uh, as a city, we're going to have to address our building code height for residential areas so that we can allow people to either rebuild or to build, uh, at a higher elevation so that they can put these, uh, stilt-type systems and so water can go underneath them. We can also solve another problem by doing so, by creating a pervious surface underneath those structures as we elevate those. But I think one of the first things we can address as a city is to look at raising our, our building heights in our residential areas.
Thank you. Okay, any comment, making sure? Board Member Sharp?
Good information here tonight. Looking more specific to our community, uh, it's been mentioned before, we're pretty much built out. And what we have left are larger pieces of property that are, are, uh, just land right now or some big pieces that are primed for redevelopment. When you look at just those pieces of property, that's really kind of where we have the larger chance to make, uh, an impact and do our new, uh, approach to, uh, handling these situations. Um, when it comes to commercial development like that, knowing the mindset of developers being greedy, uh, cheap, uh, people in some instances, they're going to be coming in here, we're going to be doing a lot of mixed use on these larger pieces of property. The things that developers would be looking at are incentives, uh, and the cost of doing these new approaches to stormwater management. In dealing with this commercial approach, what sort of information do you guys have, um, that would be best practices, uh, to deal with, uh, enticement of developers for these properties that we have? I know there's, uh, it, it gets pretty expensive doing, uh, a large commercial property on stilts, handling water underneath, um, there's baffle systems, waffle, uh, sort of foundations where you actually can have water retention within these baffle systems that will release water at a certain, uh, period of time. Do you guys have any information for that? Because that's really what we're going to be dealing with. There's great programs on the residential side that we're doing and stuff, but the big impacts are what we're going to be doing with our mixed-use big pieces of property. How do we deal with that?
So I guess I will add a perspective, um. I, there's a part of me that believes insurance will regulate that, if you will. Um, that's something we are, we're constantly hearing, um, is that the insurance market in the state, because of the increase of hazards, um, the storms, the kind of flooding that we're having, is I think proven to be, or designing or developing in a way that's more adaptive is proving to be more cost-effective than paying the insurance. Um, so I guess that's one way you could address it. I don't, I am not necessarily the mind that you need to provide incentives to developers, but there are mechanisms, like we said, through your comp plan, your LDCs and your, your AAA, your adaptation action errors, where you can require things that are more stringent, that go above the minimum that we're used to. Um, so I'll, I guess I'll just leave it there and I'll say if Jared has anything else to add, but those are some things I would consider.
So I'm, I'm not a big proponent of incentives because those are options and they're generally ignored. You have to have requirements if you want to get something done. And I think that it's important for the community to come together, see what we want to be as we grow out, as we redevelop, because you're going to redevelop, you know, you're built out, but that doesn't mean building's going to stop. And as for commercial properties or mixed-use properties, these are major developments and they're bottom-line driven, but you know, I think that once you decide what you want as a community, then the message to the development community is build to our standards or you don't get our market. And I think you have a very robust market. You know, how many less than a million dollar homes are in the city? Probably not too many. And if they are, they're older and they're probably primed for redevelopment and it'll come. So I think incentives are great for existing properties who don't have to do anything, they're in code or they're non-conforming, grandfathered in. So incentives to them, okay, that's, that's something that might entice me to be a better citizen. But for new development and redevelopment, I think the only way you're going to get in a short time, and that might be a twenty-year horizon, the kind of development that you're looking for is to require it.
Yeah, I'm not a big proponent of incentives either, but, uh, I just know that they're going to be looking for something to be able to come in here and, and, uh, help out our city.
I'd say that's your commercial market.
Pardon me?
They're going to be looking for your commercial market.
Exactly.
And if that commercial market's not there, they can't justify the cost of doing business, they won't come.
True.
And the bigger, better commercial entities, it's a cost of doing business and they recognize it. They'll, they'll parlay if they can, if there's an opportunity. And increasingly, that's not a good idea because of the Coontz decision, United States Supreme Court decision in Coontz, where the parlay turned out to be against the South St. John's River Water Management District and they ended up having to pay. And, and so stick with your regulations, if there's a planned development type of situation where you can have certain give and take, that's great. But again, what do you want to do about the water? How are we going to develop with all this water that we're getting and we're going to get and it's not going to go away?
Okay, so, so to that side, a developer comes in here, they know that they've going to have to, um, spend more money to build the project out the right way. What do you have as far as information of ways that has been done in coastal communities that work so we can implement those sort of regulations onto the developers?
We, we will try and organize a collection of best management practices. We do have the GSI LID guide that the Regional Planning Council developed in Volusia County and we can share that with you. And we're constantly, I know the council is constantly looking to get more information about where things are working. And it's just, it's evolving drastically right now. Um, I think Barad County and the municipalities on the barrier island are on the leading edge of doing the right thing, um, which is great, it's fantastic. But there's not always an example out there, there's concepts and ideas and you have to say, okay, these concepts are worth trying out and, and will work. And you just have to look at, you know, what the impacts are and what it's going to entail going forward. But the price of land in Florida is not going down, the development potential in Florida is not going down. People are moving to the barrier islands, I don't know why, but they're beautiful, you know, and, and there's a temporal attitude toward that. I'll, I'll go out on a limb and this is me just speaking from my observations, there seems to be this dramatic tension between coastal communities. to be this dramatic tension between coastal communities and the legislature over short-term rentals. As the impacts from storms become increasingly more frequent and harder to deal with, commercial properties make more sense than residential properties because they evacuate days beforehand. You know, these are renters, they're getting the heck out. Residents are more inclined to tie me to the bridge, you know, and it's just not, I think Ian shows us that that's not a real good thing. As I mentioned earlier, I was the Community Development Director for Fort Myers Beach for Charlie. It was a dramatic impact, nothing compared to Ian. And if you haven't seen footage of the water coming in and going up over the roofs of houses and then receding to leave very little but a bunch of tidbits, I encourage you to view that and I will share that with Brenda because it's just a dramatic illustration of what can happen to a Barrier Island with a major storm. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we need to circle back through for any other questions, we certainly can. I'll just give general feedback. I liked a lot of the things I heard today, all across the board. Sounds like if you came to see, are we interested in seeing proposed policies? I think the answer is yes. And the will, I think, is here to try and to test. I liked, you know, prioritizing the areas of the city where maybe they're more vulnerable for a storm surge breach in our little city and identifying those things. But the, on the developer's side, in the way that we approach new development moving forward, I've lived here my whole life. I've traveled to help the Panhandle and Michael and all the way down, lived through all those hurricanes in Titusville and Cape Canaveral. And it is, today, I'm so sensitive to just, you know, these heavy rains that we've lived through over the past few. And where we see those puddles that are small, small puddles on hurricanes or big puddles and where the heavy areas are, I think this council's had, been knee-deep, no pun intended, Vice Chair Price, in the water aspect of our city and the policy and on the south side of the city. And so, as we fix that, I'm really interested in underground excavation or storage under our public streets. That, to me, the opposite of, you know, building up and water retracts. But can we collect, in those public places, does that work? And on the incentive side, you know, they're doing the math and so, regulation's good until I think it becomes cost-prohibitive. I agree that the Barrier Island, Cape Canaveral, from a residential and certainly commercial perspective is a highly, we're going to be, we're different than other communities in Florida largely due to the port and a lot of the economic development with the aquarium coming, trying to create that extra day. Folks are coming in a day early to actually enjoy Brevard County and the impacts we've seen on our roads. I think if we were to test some things, instead of even city-wide, sometimes can be overwhelming and find those targeted areas, I think we can move those through quicker and work together with P&amp;Z to consider the policies and the proposals. And I think, if I'm understanding, we might be the first movers on some of these. We may not have a, you know, a Barrier Island coastal community that's implemented a policy before to rely on. And I don't think we've been afraid to be first movers and to try things. So, thank you for your presentation and the time we put into this. Water is such a big part of the conversations we have out here. It's involved in everything. And I think as much on, with the programs that Zach shared that we are doing, community awareness, people, folks knowing that they can get a free rain barrel. And then, you know, while that might be a little bit, I think we get 52 million gallons of rain a year on average.
That's a lot.
And so, you and I have had talks about measuring, you know, the impact of a small house or a roof and how much you can catch or doing small rain gardens in their front yards to catch those. And if there is an incentive that could work, to me, the way I look at it is, is today, our stormwater system, you know, on those properties that you talk, that build up and that do not drain well and dump water in excess of what they should, that puts a heavy strain on our, on our stormwater system. And we spend a lot of money on our stormwater, eight, nine million dollars in state revolving fund loans, I think we've been through over the past decade at least. And so, one by one, the idea is, there is sort of a measurable gallons tied to an economic incentive. Somewhere on the water bill, are there any communities where it's appropriate that have done, you know, and I don't know the administration of a program like this, but where, okay, you've installed a rain barrel. You have the capability to reduce your stormwater by X amount of gallons a year. Therefore, you know, even if it was annual, out of our CRA budget, which blight, flooded streets are blight to me, so the CRA monies might be a good fit, but in those grants, those matching funds, if someone can, you know, use their space because the city got on board with funding a part of the underground storage, because we viewed that as sort of an asset that's going to put less water back into our drains, if it's $10,000 that maybe a homeowner, a residential developer wouldn't want to expend, is there a matching grant where the city says, you put five, you know, we take five and then the city funds underground storage on that property? Those are some older ideas. I don't know if they have any merit, but those are some more.
Those are interesting. I think this is the type of discussion we were hoping to have.
Okay.
We're writing these ideas down. This is good.
Thank you.
You guys want to add to that?
I will. Mayor Morrison, if you remember when we, when I was here, we did an exercise with the Regional Planning Council where we kind of had to prioritize budgeting and infrastructure. So, I guess I would just say, keep that in mind as you think about these types of underground structures. There's no silver bullet or magic pill, if you will, that's going to solve the problem. But the idea, though, is that you can't necessarily rely on one system and the cost of those systems, as again, these storms become more extreme, sometimes those are cost prohibitive. And so, it's sometimes the best course of action is to deal with the structure and not the system. Because the stormwater system, no matter what, if it's overwhelmed, it's overwhelmed. And so, that's what we're trying to also balance, like the extreme of the storms we're going to see and then protecting certain properties. So, I would just keep that in mind because, quite frankly, and this is discussions I'm having all across the state, there's never going to be enough money to fund all of these infrastructure projects because we just keep having back-to-back storm events or back-to-back things we've never seen. So, there's a lot of money, both from the state and federal level, but it's also very competitive. And you mentioned, you know, you guys are doing the revolving loan. Other people do that as well. So, I guess I would just say, keep that in mind as you consider. But I, again, I think I would stress that policy, not necessarily infrastructure, is one of the approaches that you guys need to think about as you move forward because infrastructure's not going to solve all your problems.
Thank you. Well, we've got our impervious. I mean, P&amp;Z tackled this. We went through, round and round with the, you know, reducing the parking standards, green parking initiatives. And yes, thank you. That's all I had at this time.
I was just going to say, to start to close, is, just to kind of give an example of the, this type of foresight working out for us, your foresight as a council and as a board, was the grant that we got for the Center Street Pump Station from Resilient, Florida. We had to submit models similar to what you saw in the presentation tonight that were done with, you know, efforts by staff and other planning partners. And information from our tidal gauges and our weather stations went into that submission to basically prove the need and it worked. And all that foresight and about doing it came from you guys. So, when we get ahead of this stuff now, it puts us in a position to take advantage of stuff when it comes down the line, perhaps quicker than other people can. So, keep these ideas flowing, no pun intended, and let's keep the conversation going. We look forward to bringing back the comprehensive plan updates to you. I think, I'm thinking, I'm standing here now and thinking about it, I think it'd be prudent when we do that to bring it back with examples from perhaps other municipalities, if we can find them in other communities. Perhaps we won't. Perhaps we will be the first. But I'm sure some others have done something by now, especially coastal ones. So, we'll do that to make it kind of easier to see how we can acclimatize that to here. So, thank you for your time. We super appreciate it and we look forward to moving forward.
I did, are there any follow-up questions? Thank you, Zach, Jerry, Brenda, the whole team for presenting. Councilmember Willis?
I've got one, if you'll indulge me. As we've seen from your slide, the impervious surfaces in Cape Canaveral, can, do you have examples of other communities when permitting is done for resurfacing a parking lot? Because we have a lot of condominiums, apartments, a lot of pavement, where that permitting requires some adaptation, where you can resurface your parking lot, but it requires you to put a certain amount of impervious, of pervious surface in there, like a strip is ripped out of the middle of the parking lot?
I have started to see that. They're usually defined as a broader, like, Low Impact Development-based code that has certain requirements for properties to start doing things besides what you're talking about. But there are communities I think we can pull from that have that. I don't have an example right off the bat. Well, actually, I do. I know the city of Titusville passed a Low Impact Development ordinance, which we can kind of look to, just as a local example. I don't know how specific it is to permeable pavement, but I think a lot of the cities have started to do it or at least to look into it. So, we could certainly try and find some of those examples. Do you guys have any?
Hey Zach, why don't you mention to everybody the ISR ordinance that we're kicking around?
Yes, so we're in the preliminary phases of kind of developing like what you're talking about. Where basically, we would use some type of engineering calculation to trip a series of requirements based on how much someone wants to build on a specific site. That could include a permeable percentage to help with flooding.
Well, I'm primarily focusing on existing.
That would count for redevelopment, too. So, if someone, say, wants to redo a driveway or a hotel, wants to come in and do something, they would have to meet certain requirements based on the new code. That is something that I know, actually, Lexi Miller is spearheading that. So, Dave, do you want to speak more about it or did I get everything?
Yeah, just briefly.
Getting your steps in.
Very briefly, I promise. Yeah, I mean, we're going to be presenting this to the board and to the council and the board and the council can get as aggressive as you want to on this. These are all going to be policy questions and decisions that you make. And it can range anywhere from a simple redevelopment project to a new construction. So, and we've actually, we've looked at actually maybe adding in some incentives, too, to help homeowners meet some of these standards. So, I think the message I want to get is, anything's on the table and everything's on the table. Now is our opportunity to take a look at this and to be as creative as we want, recognizing too, that we don't want to get crazy with this stuff. And we've got, you know, we've got homeowners. We don't want to discourage and shut down redevelopment in the city. I mean, that's certain, we don't want to go that far. But it's a, it's a great opportunity. I'm so, so appreciative of this discussion this evening.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. City Attorney, any comments? Or City Manager, any comments?
Just a funny one. Give me a creative idea for a huge version of the Monopoly game called the Storm Surge version, where you're not completely the streets flooded, a thousand people are going to build that higher, they say.
I'm glad I asked.
I do have one more shout-out. If anybody would like, at 8:00 a.m. this Saturday, we will be planting the last 140 plants in the rain garden. If you'd like to come and plant some plants. If we can do 17,000 sea oats in three hours, I think we'll be done in about five minutes. So, get them while they're still fresh. But we will be finishing that up. That will be the last of the plants. As I said before, there were almost 1,000 that went into this project, so that will be very fun. And we'll have a little booth out there with some partners. UF IFIS will also be in attendance with some for donated plant seeds that people can have, which is nice. So, come on and join us and then we'll go up in the Cape Center after.
Thank you. Any other final comments from you? Seeing none, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right. Meeting adjourned.